Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the May 24th County Board of Supervisors meeting, Santa Cruz County. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Chief Horvath, can you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Item B, adoption of the agenda. Madam Manager?
Good morning. There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and move that we adopt the agenda as recommended and posted, and allow chair to deviate as necessary.
And I will second that?
Second.
Okay. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Item C, call to the public. So if you could just state your name and your address when you approach the podium, and please make sure you speak into the microphone so we have a good recording of what's happening. And Mr. Schock, you're on top. So William Schock.
Is it now?
Yes, is it the call to the public?
And you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Bill Schock. I live in, let's see how, about there. Okay, I live in Elgin, 4199 Highway 82, and I live on the east side of Los Millics Vineyard. And I have a few comments about their PAD. I spoke at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and some of the things that I came up with, I'd like to discuss with you today, and what I came up with since then. The first thing is, is that in their PAD, and also in their history on the Internet, they say that in 2018, they had this vision of having a vineyard, a winemaking facility, a tasting room, and some casitas. Okay? What I found, but they only bought 20 acres, and they're asking for a variance of going from supposedly 26 and a half acres down to 20 acres for this entire facility. In other words, putting a lodge on 10 acres rather than 16 and a half acres. I just got the minutes of those meetings yesterday. Unfortunately, I finally got, I called Alma, and she went to try to figure out why the minutes were not on the Internet, and why I couldn't read them over the weekend. And it turns out that they finally came up about after 10:30 in the morning. I got them, I downloaded them, I just started to read the first one when I got a phone call that there was a fire, and it was headed towards my cattle. So I left. I got home at about 7:00 that night, and you saw the burned over the top of Mustang Mountain there, and Bill Break's place and everything. So I didn't have a chance to really look at this until about 3:30 this morning. What I found in there was in the minutes of, of March minutes, was that Ms., I think it's Moreno, said that when asked about why they didn't get more acreage, she said, well, actually, this, I've got the minutes here, and I could read it to you, actually. Well, actually, they didn't really do this until later. Oh, it's on here. This didn't become their actual vision until far later, and so they didn't buy more than 20 acres. The thing is, is that what they, when they purchased the 20 acres, they purchased that from Makowski LLC. They had 62 acres at the time. They carved 20 acres out of it. And Makowskis continued to try to sell the rest of that until last June, July of last year, when they finally sold it. And it's now in the hands of Mr. Davis, who is, you know, leveling it and thinking about putting a vineyard in. In other words, they had from 2018 to 2021 to purchase additional acreage to do exactly what they're saying they need a variance for. And they didn't. However, during that time, in 2018, they bought a vineyard over near Alphrida, and then in 2021, they again bought an additional 79 acres. So they had the money, they had everything, they had vacant land that they could have purchased, and on the other side of them is Gerald Goff, and he's been trying to sell his acreage for a long time and still is. So they need this variance in order to achieve their vision, which they even admit didn't really come to fruition until recently. And they didn't. So they could have, but they didn't. That's the first thing. The second thing is...
Schock, so we're on a three-minute clock, and you're already at probably about five minutes?
I have five minutes.
No, you have three minutes, and you're over. So if you could wrap up your comments, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I got a whole bunch more to say. That's just the beginning.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Okay.
I'm glad. And then you can also comment during the public hearing. Okay?
How much time do we have in the public hearing?
No, not the, no. I don't think, the public hearing, we don't...
I can't say anything in three minutes.
I think the public hearing's different.
Okay.
Do three? Yeah, everybody does three.
All right. John Fletcher?
I'll be last in three minutes? Okay. Just so you know. So good morning. My name's John Fletcher. I live at 100 Camino Agave in Elgin, which is just a stone's throw away from the following vineyards, Twisted Union, Flying Leap, Callahan, and the latest winery to open, which is Salvatore Vineyards. I'm here today to voice my opposition to the proposed expansion at Los Millics Vineyards, and the reasons are simple. First, there's been a total lack of transparency and debate regarding the proposal to expand their business through zoning variances or zoning changes. You know, why do I say that? In the Los Millics Vineyard planned area development titled Public Participation Plan, Section 1I on page 18, and from now on, I'll just call the Vineyard LMB, it states, "The owner of LMB knows their neighbors and other winery owners in the region, and will contact them to discuss the PAD proposal, process, and timing. An invitation to a virtual meeting will also be sent to the most impacted property owners located within 600 feet. The letter will briefly describe the project and offer a date and time to meet, as well as a way to contact the project team with any questions." So essentially, they contacted the other wineries and maybe one or two other adjoining Until last week, most area residents around Elgin were not aware of this rezoning request, and I know that many still are unaware. As you know, we are a very rural community. We don't have a daily newspaper or radio station to disseminate information. Putting two small public notice signs at the corner of 82 and Upper Elgin Road to inform the community about their expansion, this expansion, while it may meet the current requirements, does nothing to inform the public in a rural area like ours. Up until one week, the LMB did not even have the public notices posted in front of their, in front of their entrance of their business, which I believe should have been done at least one month prior to the April 28th Planning and Zoning Meeting. This property is simply too small to accommodate what they're proposing to add. In addition to what is already on the 20-acre property, a wine tasting room, a winemaking building, a business partner's house, they want to add nine casitas stacked side by side, and a commercial restaurant on a property that is zone general rural and therefore not allowed. I see him out of time, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Good morning. Leslie Fletcher, 100 Camino Agave in Elgin. Having reviewed the county staff report, Los Millics variance requests are referred to as slight modifications to the current GR zoning laws. I believe these modifications are not slight, but actually severe deviations to the GR code and reflect non-conforming use of the parcel. It also changes the code for everybody. Los Millics wants setbacks and lot size, minimum setbacks and lot size. This would give anyone the right to build a commercial lodge up to 15 units. This falls well outside a conditional use permit. Lodging like this is not compatible with the surrounding area, as it is akin to a resort or hotel-type lodging, and it belongs on commercially zoned property. It will also strain the local aquifer. Low-flow water fixtures are not a solution to the amount of water that will be used from an operation this size. For health and safety reasons, separation and setback distances are determined for proper soil absorption of wastewater, so area wells are not contaminated. Food sales requiring a Health Department F-series permit are permitted, is what they want. Current zoning prohibits this. Commercial restaurants should be issued only to establishments on commercially zoned properties. I don't want a restaurant next to my house, as it would prevent my reasonable use and enjoyment of my property afforded by living in a rural area. Our wells are fed from groundwater, and the aquifer is replenished by rain. There hasn't been any significant rain in months, yet at least 10 wineries in a concentrated area are draining the aquifer to grow grapes and operate tasting rooms and facilities. Adding restaurants and casitas will only exacerbate this. Why should residents bear the brunt of wells running dry because wineries consume more local water? Water for residential drinking, cooking, bathing, as well as for our animals, should take precedence over visitors drinking wine and having a place to sleep. The parcel does not meet the minimum acreage requirements to build nine casitas. Everyone here who has built a home or structure was required to follow the rural zoning requirements set forth by the county. Los Millics should not be allowed to change the code, as the rest of us have had to follow setback rules that are in place to handle proper septic and water usage. The planned area development provisions state that the use of the property must remain under current zoning unless a rezoning has occurred. To my knowledge, no rezoning has been granted. Therefore, these changes cannot be permitted. They simply are trying to put too much onto this parcel. If Los Millics wanted to develop a resort, they should have purchased commercially zoned parcel. The variance goes well beyond the limits of current zoning for a rural area and are in direct violation of the codes. In reality, it is a rezon from a rural to commercial area without the disadvantage of paying commercial taxes. Okay, in conclusion, if granted, this will set a precedent having a real and lasting negative impact on the lives of residents and taxpayers, as well as the county's intended preservation of natural open space. This isn't just a one-off situation. This affects every other winery and business that can incorporate the same changes. Therefore, we are relying on you, the supervisors, to protect our area and require Los Millics to comply with existing zoning laws. Thank you.
Remind everybody that our commentary is three minutes.
My name is Michelle Sayled. I live in Sonoyta. I haven't talked in public since I've had cancer, so I'm very nervous. I am in support of the changes in the building at Los Millics. I feel like a lot of people are feeling like that if you guys allow them to go through this variance, or to approve the variance, that a variance is a case-by-case basis. It's not that you're changing the laws permanently. It's if I want to build a basketball court a little too close to my property line, then I would come to you and ask for permission, like they are asking for permission now. They're not building something and saying, oh, it's my bad. So I feel like you, if you did approve this variance, it's not something that's grandfathered in, and now all the rules are changed forever and ever. That's my opinion. I feel that it's for you to decide on a case-by-case basis with common sense and within reason, and that's why these meetings are held. I feel like a lot of the people opposed to this have horses, have cattle, have all these things, and they just don't want change. But their animals, their horses, all of that are using quite a bit of water also. So, you know, if, I'm not even going to go there. I do feel that Los Millics has been transparent, and including on Facebook, I have even offered or done the invitation for anyone to come out and talk to them, because they are an open book, open dialogue. They have no problem explaining what they're trying to do, or what their goals and dreams are, whatever. And a lot of these people have not gone out there and even looked at the facility, talked to them, asked the questions, go out there in person and do it. And I do believe I did see a notice at the post office for the meeting, so that's another thing. So sorry, I don't sound as professional as the Fletchers, but I'm a real person in the neighborhood, and I support it. Oh, and I feel that we don't have enough lodging in the area, for we are already at destination location. People come in droves on the weekends, and they drink. I would rather them have a place to stay than to drive up the 83 or 82 or the 90. So, thank you.
Anita Stevens-Kay. I'm a resident of Sonoyta. I'm also a business owner in Sonoyta. I come to you as both the resident and the business owner. As a business owner, looking at somewhere having yet another commercial kitchen in the area, I look at my workforce getting depleted yet again by the lack of low-end rentals, not the lodging. Lodging all the way out here really doesn't help me in any way, but I'm not opposed to this winery. I'm not opposed to the lodging that stays within our comprehensive plan zoning. The water situation is kind of what is alarming me as a resident. I live over in Sonoyta on the west end, where they're having to drill new wells to allow people to just live at their homes. I see these huge wells going in, and it's alarming to me, because the last hydrological report that was surveying the entire valley was back in the 90s, and at that time, they said that the maximum build-out was one house per just under 13 acres. Our general plan is way beyond that, at five acres. The water table is dropping significantly everywhere. These casitas are just mini houses. People stay, low-flow toilets, stuff like that. It doesn't matter when you have that many. I am asking you to stay with the zoning that we have. If Los Millics cannot exist with their plan within our existing zoning, then maybe they don't have a good plan. What they're, what it looks like to me is that they have a little bit of winery, a little bit of vineyards to support a larger commercial operation. It's not a family estate winery, which was originally the vision for the area, not to have these commercial operations scattered within the valley. Cattle, horses, if your pasture doesn't support them because of drought, you have to take them off the pasture. You can't just take the vines off their growing. You have, you have to irrigate. You must irrigate, no matter if there's a drought or not. That's the difference between ranching and making wine, is that the cattle can't exist without the rain, whereas the vineyards can. It's going to impact everyone. Our water table is going down fast. It's going to be so that only the very, very wealthy people can stay there and live there, because you're going to have to start dropping those wells about every 10 years, about every 200 feet, until there's no water for anyone, cattle, wineries, residents. Please keep in mind that we have this general plan, that people worked on, the comprehensive plan, they've worked on hard to facilitate us all living here together. Please stay within the confines of that draft. Thank you.
Good morning, guys. James Callahan, 10 Swayheart, Land Sonoyta. I own multiple properties there and a winery called Rune. I know a lot of people in here. I'm here in support of the Los Millics PAD. There's very little commercial property in Sonoyta, first of all. There's a small strip in downtown, and the other option besides the PAD is to rezone that property as commercial, and I think that would invite unwelcome development possibly in the future in rural areas. So I think the PAD's a good way of kind of protecting that general rural mindset, as well as letting development happen within Sonoyta. It's definitely important that we get more lodging. Like, we have Airbnbs everywhere popping up. I own two Airbnbs. Pavly is going to have a lodge. He's going to compete with me. He competes with me with my winery, but together, we work together. You know, by bringing more people out here, we're all going to succeed. So I'm definitely in support of that. I think getting more tourism dollars out here is going to help everyone. And when people try to book a hotel for the weekend, and there's nothing available, they're not going to come. And I know some locals here might be happy with that, but it's also, Sonoyta's been doing wine for 50 years, so, I mean, if you moved here after that, it's like moving next to an airport and then complaining about the noise. It's part of what we do in Sonoyta. It's part of the agriculture that we do, just like cattle. And we need to support people that are investing in our community, not corporations that want to come in. I'd rather have Pavly put a casita in than Holiday Inn Express do it. Keep that money local, and I know Pavly from Phoenix. He's a great business owner. He has one of the best restaurants in Arizona, and he's a good person. He's going to make good wine and have a good little operation going on there. As far as water is concerned, we're all guilty, living in Arizona, of using water. Probably we shouldn't be here, but we're all going to suck the aquifer dry eventually. It's just the way it's going to happen. And we have, all we can do is do our best is to, you know, maintain what type of sustainability we can afford ourselves as Arizonans for the future. Also, I would like to say, from a public safety standpoint, people coming out to eat at wineries, I don't think full-blown Chili's restaurants are appropriate in rural areas, but offering snacks, offering small bites, offering a little bit of food here and there to help people get some nosh before they head back on the road, if they're going to Tucson or Nogales or Sierra Vista or Phoenix, isn't going to hurt anything. Lodging's going to keep them here. Drunk driving's a huge problem, obviously, across the country, across the world. If we can keep people here, if we can feed them a little more, it'll make the roads a little bit safer. That's about all I have to say, really. So I just, you know, want to support you and what you're doing, so, thank you.
Bruno Hazen, Sonoyta, property owner. Can somebody hear me? Acknowledge, please.
Well, just want to say, I second Mr. Callahan, James Callahan, with his opinion on Los Millics. I think it's beautification of the area. Just out of note, it does take more water to grow hay than drip system on a wine or vine. It is unfair to have this loss taken away from this property, which is beautification of the area, and it's tastefully done. Also, just the fact that he's going to attract more business to the area. Again, seven casitas is really meaningless, just like Mr. Callahan mentioned. You can't imagine if Howard Johnson or Holiday Inn comes in, now you're looking at a different landscape defamation, in my opinion. I'm for Los Millics, and I wish him the best luck, and it's great to see another vineyard pop up. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Apologize, my microphone died, so nobody could hear me saying, "We're going to finish inside." Thank you. Okay, Brett Wagner?
Hi, I'm Brett Wagner. I'm the winemaker for Twisted Union Wine Company. Now, as the winemaker for Twisted Union Wine Company, I am an employee. I'm not an owner. I originally come from Vail, Arizona, and see how that growth was detrimental to the lifestyle that I wanted to live in Vail, being a big suburb and all the track homes and so on. That is not what I feel is trying to be accomplished here by anyone. I feel that is actually the opposite in most cases. A good point that I was thinking of, like James had said, you know, I'd much rather seven casitas on a property rather than a hotel or motel coming in there, which would arguably drain more. So with that being said, I don't think having individual casitas on people's property would be as detrimental as what other growth could look like in our community. And also, with the growth of the wine industry and the wineries in the area, it gives employees like myself in the industry more of an opportunity to afford the living out there in Sonoyta. It's not cheap, especially being a single full-time father. Opportunities are hard to come by. I've been blessed to have been able to have a lot of opportunities come my way, but having an industry to where it takes years before you're turning profits, sometimes it's harder for those industries, for those businesses, to pay their employees what they may be worth. But being able to add other factors in there, like housing, or not housing, but, you know, your casitas and your temporary stays, I think that will allow more people to come down here, stimulating our economy, allowing us to have our own personal growth, and for employees to grow with the poor economy that we have and all of the inflation that we're seeing. So I feel like Pavly setting the way for this will help us employees in the industry be able to, you know, stay in the industry and not have to seek employment elsewhere because we can't afford to be here. I want to see opportunity. I want to see some growth. Do I want to see that residential growth? Like I said, no, most definitely. But on having a safe lodging, that's something, we have two Airbnbs as well at our property, and it prevents a lot of people from driving back in unsafe Highway 83 or wherever that is. So I feel it's a lot safer for them to stay there. I feel it's not an eyesore having it on our property that's built, as long as we do it the right way, and as long as we keep sustainability in mind and do the best that we can within our means, that's all we can really do, because growth will happen, vineyards will be planted out there, and that's just all there is to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brett. Okay, so we need to go to the Zoom world and see what, if there's anybody else who'd like to comment? Is there anybody who's attending this meeting online that would like to comment? I need you to raise your hand. And to do that, that would be what, star six? Star nine. If you're on the phone. Say, "We're not seeing anybody," so if anybody would like to address the board during Call to the Public, maybe you could just speak up? Oh, I got a raised hand. Let's see. Phone number?
Hi there, this is...
1860?
Go ahead.
If your, phone number ends in 1860, if you could please identify yourself?
If your phone number ends in 1860, if you could please identify yourself?
Bruno Hazen.
Okay, Bruno?
Yes, I own a property in Sonoyta. Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you please spell your last name?
Hazen, H-A-Z-E-N. I'm a property owner in Sonoyta on Swanson Road. And I'm in support of Los Millics. I think it's the beautification of the area and the smaller amount of casitas allow for more people to, you know, enjoy their day and stay for the night. And I think that it's great for the local business and another vineyard is really not breaking the bank. What's happened is a lot of people have misconception about drip system on a vine that consume a lot less water than, you know, grown hay and other crops. It is the biggest misconception out there, that grapes suck a lot of water, which is untrue. That's my thoughts, and I'm for Los Millics, and I wish him the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who's on the phone or online that would like to comment? We have somebody that phone number ends in 1520. Oh, that's 1-520. It ends in something 1-59. That's Rudy? Okay. Sorry, Rudy, you don't get to comment.
That's okay.
All righty, you get a chance later. Okay, so there's nobody else who'd like to speak? So, we're done with the call to the comment. We're going to go to current events. Oh, you would like to speak? Sure, did you fill out a form? Okay, I need your name and form.
My name is Gloria Small.
I need your podium. Fill out your form later.
I will, I am Gloria Small, and I live in Sonoyta, very close to the properties we're talking about. And I did not plan on speaking, but I do want to say that the question comes to mind as to why the zoning laws were changed for this property development. Why can we not stay within the confines of the law that was established? The Millics had opportunity to get more property, but they didn't take advantage of that. So that is my big question, my big concern. This sets a precedence that we know in the law is very important and recognized all the time. So I would like to say that I like the development, but not the changing of the zoning laws. Thank you.
Thank you. And I need you to fill out a slip and hand it to the clerk, please. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to current events. Supervisor Mulara?
Mr. Chairman, good morning. I'll be real brief. Just want to inform that I along with Supervisor Reese attended WIR conference. And there were two highlights. One was Alhama Castillo Assistant Secretary for Economic Development, U.S. Department of Commerce, and she spoke about new transportation, economic development, and broadband grants that are going to be available. The other one was Scott Murray, finance, financial market economist. And his high point was basically, he talked about economic downfalls, and he compared the 1980s to now. And basically, during the 80s, there was low productivity, and nowadays we have good productivity. So that was a good high point. And those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Have a safe trip home. Supervisor Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. Just briefly to follow up on the economists from nationwide, we're all concerned with the high inflation rate. And he believes that we're not going to go into a recession, but many of the things that I'm seeing are pointing that we have to be very careful, as this year continues, as to how we look at our funds and our money, because it's scary out there that the rise in gasoline prices, the shortage of many necessities to live, now the baby formula shortage that they're bringing in from Germany to help many of the parents with children that have allergies. Those are things that we need to be very aware of. And I know, as a community this small, the last recession we went to was very hard on this community. And so as we move forward, we're going to have to be very cautious of how we plan our budgets, how we spend the tax dollars that we have. I know the last recession, we spent most of our savings that we had to try to make sure that we presented the balanced budget. So it was good. Got a chance to talk to him afterwards, and so he believes that if we do go into a recession, it's going to be short-term, but I'm listening to a lot of, and I'm looking at a lot of things, and there's a lot of conflicting statements between different economists. So, and finally, I want to send our condolences to Fernando Barra. Fernando Barra is our retiring superintendent of school. His mother passed away, I think, two days ago, and she was a wonderful woman. I got the opportunity to meet her, and she was very supportive of her children. And I know that she touched a lot of lives, but I think when I look at what Fernando did and how he talked about his mom when we had our last meeting there, she was the biggest supporter. You know, our moms are big cheerleaders, and they're always there to support us. So, you know, if you know Fernando, you know, send him a little note of condolences. And Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the Barra family.
Sure. We're going to express a moment of silence for the Barra family.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much for--
That concludes my report.
So I'd also like to start by expressing my condolences to my brother-in-law, who's lost his mom, Mrs. Barra. There are a few boys in that family. They're all good guys. And it was a very, very quick event, so I just want to express my condolences to that family. I wanted to come in and say thank you to the Forest Service and to the Arizona Fire Department, Arizona fire people, and all of our local fire crews for their quick work on the San Rafael fire. And then last night, we have a new fire, so they're out there working it again. I really appreciate what they're doing to the ranchers. I'm really sorry that we're losing all of our feed. Hopefully, your houses and your outhouses are, you know, your outbuildings are going to be okay. I'd like to talk to, unfortunately, we're doing a big Public Works project in Ruriko right now, so we moved our water truck from Sonoyta to Ruriko so we could do this project. But I spoke to the Public Works Director this morning. We're going to try to get a water truck out there. In the meantime, the two, I forgot, the two large tanks that can fill a water truck in about 10 minutes are sitting out there. They are available to the fire departments. They know that, and they have keys to our yards. So we just want to let them know that we'll collaborate whatever we can to have, you know, whatever tools the county can provide for your safety out there. That's really, really important. So just let us know if there's something that you guys need, okay? Other than that, I think those are my comments at this point. I talked about the roadwork that they're doing in Ruriko. It's a large project off of Paseo Mexico. They also completed chip sealing the trail from Palo Perroto to Ruriko Drive, so that is now complete. There's a couple more steps they want to do to the final touches on it, but kudos to Public Works. It was a project that was delayed by COVID, and then delayed by COVID, and then delayed by COVID, but they just kept at it, and we finally got it done. So, thank you, Public Works. I know that the trails are something that the people in Ruriko use an awful lot. And that's my comments. Madam Manager?
Good morning again. Since our last board meeting, Marciu and I and Sonia held the remaining budget meetings that we need to put together a balanced budget. I was also privileged to judge at Nogales High School the senior projects. That's always fun every year. I was also able to meet the new city manager and have a conversation about partnerships that the county and the city may be able to do together in the future. I attended a mental health fair out in Tubac. And finally, Sonia and Kim and I are reviewing our personnel policy that needs updated, and hopefully will be adopted, brought before the board sooner rather than later.
Great. That's good news. Thank you very much. Item E, department reports and activities. Madam Manager, are you going to handle that this morning?
I am. I thought I was done. The general fund has a balance of $19,419,138, of which 10.3 million is invested. The road has a balance of $1,994,802, of which about $815,000 is invested. The flood has a balance of $1,712,728, which just over $500,000 is invested. And the jail has a balance of $3,519,300, of which just over $1 million is invested. On the jail district, we do have our annual debt service that's due, and I believe that's around $2.9 million. So we will see that balance going down here quickly. Total of all funds of $44,954,300, I'm sorry, $637, of which $14.4 million is invested. We have an ending estimated month balance of $16,600,054, which is up about $3.1 million from this time last year. I'll entertain any questions the board may have.
Chairman, Supervisor Reese, do you have any questions?
No, thank you, Jennifer.
Supervisor Mulara, do you have any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're not going to do the executive session right now. Can I hear a motion to move into flood control?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're in flood control. Item one, discussion possible action to approve subrecipient agreement with the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs for the administration of pre-disaster mitigation grant number PDMC-PJ-09-AZ-2019-001-EMF-2020-PC. I'm glad I'm not dyslexic today. 0014 for the Ephraim Canyon Project.
That's Jesus.
Jesus, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. It's actually shorter than initially it started, so that's the good news. As you guys know, we got a grant for $10 million for the Ephraim Canyon flood control project. It's a reimbursable grant, so that means for every invoice, we pay the invoice first, and then we submit it to them, and then give a 75% back. We did meet with Daisy Dimma and talked about some of the challenges with the grant. They did introduce some flexibility, so we'll be able to get a creative and maybe do the RFQ in a way that it's advantageous to us, and maybe expand the timeframe. We currently, when we submitted for the grant, it was, we submitted, we have, the numbers are from 2019. A lot has happened since then. We're hoping it's enough money, but we'll keep you posted as we develop our plans. So, just to let you know, our first phase is to finish out the plans and get the permits necessary, and then we'll go through the process of bidding it out.
Great, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and move that we approve the subrecipient agreement with the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs and Administration as presented.
Do I have a second?
Rudy said second, I heard.
Okay, we have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item two, discussion possible action to approve resolution number 2022-07, designating the flood control general manager as the applicant's agent for the pre-disaster mitigation grant number, here we go again, PDMC-PJ-09-AZ-2019-001-EMF-2020-PC-0014 for the Ephraim Canyon Flood Project.
Mr. Chair, this is one of the requirements of the grant that the county designates an applicant agent, or an agent. I'm the general manager, so it'd be appropriate that I would be the one overseeing the project.
Congratulations on the post. I didn't know you had.
It's a promotion. Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move that we approve resolution 2022-07, designating the flood control general manager, Mr. Jesus Valdez, as the applicant agent for the pre-disaster mitigation grant as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we adjourn our flood control district and reconvene regular session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Action item one, discussion possible action to approve reappointment of Guillermo Valencia as planning and zoning commissioner for District Two.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would be honored to reappoint Mr. Guillermo Valencia as planning and zoning commissioner for District Two.
And do I have a second?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, discussion possible action for authorization to create and fill IT media specialists in environmental health to fulfill the COVID-19 vaccine equity grant work plan previously approved on August 17, 2021. Jeff?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second under discussion?
We're good.
Resources, Sonia?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yes, so this is to help fulfill the COVID-19 vaccine equity work plan. The requirement was to have an IT media specialist to help assist with all the additional work that has come from COVID-19, contact tracing, as well as investigations, that kind of thing. So, the grant was previously approved back in 2021, so we are now, just now, being able to get out there and recruit for this position.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three, discussion possible action to fill, for authorization to fill, A. County Attorney, Deputy County Attorney, sorry, Mr. Attorney, Deputy County Attorney, one position, and B. a senior count position for administrative services.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second under discussion. Madam Manager?
These positions are both budgeted and previously approved, so.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. No other comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item four, discussion possible action to approve nonprofit grant agreements recommended by Committee of Santa Cruz County Residents convened by the Community Foundation of Southern Arizona, funded through federal funds by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 for the Community Financial Capacity Program. Madam Manager?
Good morning again. It is with great pleasure that we have these items on the agenda today. I'm available for questions, but Angie Donaldson has been instrumental in helping us implement the use of our ARPA funds, so I would like to thank her before I turn it over to her.
Actually, let's make it a motion, and then let's turn it over to her under discussion.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and move to approve the nonprofit grant agreements as recommended by-- Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and move to approve the nonprofit grant agreements as recommended by the committee A through P.
And do I hear a second?
I will second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second and under discussion. Angie, are you?
Sure. Yes, I'm happy to present today the recommendations of the Southern Arizona Community Foundation, which we hired because of their expertise in getting grants out to the community for many different types of donors. And they put together a committee of five local residents and also one staff member from the community foundation that made these recommendations based on the criteria that we had publicized, that we had provided in grant writing support, and also that we had put in informational trainings out to all the applicants. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the process. There were twenty-eight applications for one point two million dollars, and the recommendation is to approve sixteen of those awards.
Okay, so. So, Angie, did you say there was one point two million dollars and how many applications?
There were twenty-eight applicants and they applied for one point two million dollars. You had allocated five hundred thousand dollars initially for this program, so the committee made decisions to distribute that money based on what they had available. Some of the applicants weren't awarded the full amount, and that was the committee's recommendation as well, based on merits of the proposals. They also looked at the size of the annual operating budgets of the applicants. Some were much smaller than others, and so they decided to distribute that accordingly. And also, they looked at geographic distribution.
Good, thank you. And, oh, one more question. I know I had, like the Boys and Girls Club reach out to me and hopefully we can find some money for them too. But I want to thank Jennifer for sitting down with me yesterday afternoon and going over why these were picked, so I understand fully, but hopefully if we do have another round, because I know the Boys and Girls Club does a great job, especially now that summer's coming and they keep kids busy. So, we want to make sure that they're in at least a safe learning environment as opposed to be running around and trying to create mischief. So, those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Malar, do you have any comments?
Mr. Chair, I just want to also thank Angie and the committee that put these together because they had a lot of homework to do and we really appreciate what they've done. It's quite a bit of money and it's good to see that it's going to good organizations. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I also like to thank.
Can I make one other comment that I would just like to make? Any of the nonprofits that were not awarded are eligible to apply for the forgivable loan program that was announced this week. There's an article in the newspaper about that today. There are workshops June sixth through ten. So, any 501(c)(3) organizations that are in a difficult financial position that would like to apply for forgivable loans are welcome to learn about that process. There's a three-month window to learn, and we welcome any applications through that program as well.
Thank you, Angie. I'd also like to thank Angie for all of her hard work on this and staff because it took a lot, it was a huge effort. It was important for the board to use some of this American Rescue Plan money to support local nonprofits and to support small businesses in our community that have been impacted so negatively by this pandemic and they're still trying to dig themselves out of those holes. I thought, you know, the program that was designed for the nonprofits using the Community Foundation of Southern Arizona and also the program that's designed for small businesses using Chicanos por la Calza as our partner to evaluate these grants, it takes it out of the hands of the politicians, it puts it into the hands of people who understand what the needs are and how these programs really work. It's just, it's been an incredible effort, and I'm glad that we finally have some agencies that are being awarded money, that they can, you know, they're going to go back out to them, they're going to, you know, not everybody got everything that they asked for. These are federal grants. They do have to follow federal guidelines. There's a lot of reporting, so everybody has to now go back and accept the amount of money that was awarded to them, and then we can move forward. So, thank you very much for that. With that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor are accepting?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Okay, item six, discussion possible action to approve reprogram request from Heide Grant, HT-21-2951 for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Item seven, discussion possible action to approve provider contract with Sonora Behavioral Health Hospital LLC for inpatient mental health services to meet statutory requirements for Title 36 Mental Health Services from April first, 2022 through March thirty-first, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item eight, discussion possible action to approve resolution 2022-05 canceling precinct committee elections for August second, 2022, and appointing the candidates that filed as deemed elected.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second under discussion. So, what happened here was there were just enough precinct committee people that were appointed, that there was going to be no, nobody running against anybody to fill these positions. In that case, the board just adopts the precinct committee people as elected officials for their party. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item nine, discussion possible action, recommendation of approval, disapproval for application of extension of premises for Sunset Ride, Sonoyta, Arizona. Madam Clerk, everything in order?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, everything in order.
Okay.
Your call. Move to approve.
Move. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item ten, tax valuation adjustments, A through C.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item eleven, monthly reports. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Chair, all reports are in.
You're doing a good job. Thank you very much.
Move to approve all reports as submitted.
And I will second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of minutes from 5:32 and 5:13:22?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Aye.
Demands. Mr., I, well, as a chairman, I'll move that we approve.
The demands.
The demands that include four hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-five cents out of the general fund and three million, eighty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we have to do this. A hearing, settlement.
I think we go into the public hearing and study session.
So, let's go into the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and move that we recess our regular meeting and convene into the public hearing for the planned area development presentation.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. So, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. We are in the public hearing component of the planned area development. Frank?
Morning, Mr. Supervisors and members of the board. I hope your morning is going well. So, I don't have a full presentation for you. I just essentially am here to answer any questions. I provided most of the information, and staff has provided most of the information in the staff report. Some questions came up during the call to the public. If you guys want to follow up on any of those, I'm here to answer any of your questions for you.
Sure. Supervisor Malar, Supervisor Malar, do you have any questions?
Could you state his name, please?
I'm sorry, I muted.
His name?
No, not at this time, sir.
My name's Frank Dillon. I'm the Director of Community Development.
Did Rudy have anything?
I'm sorry Supervisor Malar for the interruption. Did you have a question for Frank?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay. Supervisor Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank, I know that I've received quite a few emails, both in support and opposing what's being recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I know for a fact that one of the commissioners was opposing because of water, and I think the water issue that has been mentioned by everyone here today, I think that was his biggest objection. I did get an opportunity to talk to the commissioners that I have appointed, and he went out there with you, just with you. He didn't want anybody else to go out there. He went over it. And what he saw out there, he thought was, you know, a good thing to do, as has been mentioned by some, even though some people do not agree. But I know as a county, we don't have any jurisdiction over water. That would be the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality or Water. Frank?
ADWR, yes, and, yeah, right, and it's outside of the Santa Cruz Active Water Management Area as well, the site is. We obviously, you know, we did an analysis of the, you know, the water usage, you know, against this project. And based on what our findings, the staff, you know, essentially, and what was presented by the applicant and what we were able to find when checking and vetting, ultimately, the information provided was that the proposed, while water is an issue in Sonoyta and Elgin, that this particular proposed project wasn't single-handedly going to provide or cause an adverse impact in any notable way other than any other use that would be permitted by right onsite. For example, like if there was another vineyard located next door or a winery next door that was, that we do permit by right, that essentially this proposal isn't going to cause like any additional burden, that that also wouldn't. And just to, you know, just to provide a little bit of background information. So, there were some comments about, and this is just more for clarification than anything else, there were some comments about variances and conditional uses and things like that. And just to be clear, this is a planned area development proposal, which is separate from those other items, those other tools. Conditional uses are a separate way to ask for special permission. Variances are a way to ask for relief from zoning code requirements. The intent and purpose of planned area developments is to essentially create an overlay zoning that lays on top of the underlying GR zoning. In this case, it's GR, so General Rural. So, what it's essentially is a planning tool that allows applicants to approach the planning department and the Planning and Zoning Commission ultimately, and then subsequently the Board of Supervisors to propose dynamic uses that are supported by the underlying zoning. So, questions came up as to why not, why are they amending the existing zoning regulations? It's a good question. So, under GR, there would be required a certain minimum lot area and so on and so forth. But part of a PAD and what a PAD allows for applicants to do is to say, we want to present these dynamic uses that are supported by the underlying zoning just with, you know, we have site constraints ultimately, and we're showing you a configuration and so on and so forth. And we're demonstrating design and are basically our own rules and regulations as to how this would work and going through the criteria provided to demonstrate how a unique set of, or, excuse me, a dynamic set of uses can be managed onsite. So, that's the intent of a PAD, and that's essentially why that tool exists, is so folks can, you know, go through a pretty extraordinarily onerous process. A condition, regular conditional use permit just requires an applicant to go to, you know, submit an application to staff and then subsequently go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then they approve a project. A variance process requires applicants to submit an application. Ultimately, they go to a board of adjustment, and a variance may or may not be approved there. Re-zonings and so on and so forth, and PADs have to go to Planning and Zoning Commission. In this case, twice, they have to go for a conceptual plan review, which in this case was done in January. Then subsequently, they came back in March. The item was tabled because the commissioners requested more information, and then came back in April, and that's when the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to approve or recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for this project. Now, we're here in review of the intermediate plan. Board of Supervisors gets to review the intermediate plan. Depending on, you know, if you choose to approve or deny the intermediate plan. Subsequently, you can approve the intermediate plan if you'd like, and you can ask the applicants if there are conditions, you can approve it with conditions, ultimately ask the applicants for more information related to certain things. And there, when they come back to present their final plan to you, their final plan can reflect those conditional, conditions of approval. So, just wanted to clarify some process things and kind of walk us through that.
So, this process is available to anyone, and just because it's granted or denied doesn't mean that it's going to be the land of the law. Everything's done on an individual basis.
That's correct. And just to clarify, there were some questions about why, you know, why wouldn't you rezone, why wouldn't you rezone the property as opposed to doing a PAD overlay? Again, the PAD overlay is a tool that overlays on top of the underlying zoning. And so, the intent is, is that the uses that are being proposed are supported by the underlying zoning as opposed to commercial uses, for example, like in this case. Like if you, if you, just to give you kind of an extreme example, you would see if somebody came with a PAD and said, we want to do, and I'm just going to throw this out. This is not what the applicants are saying. I just want to be very clear. This is a hypothetical situation. So, if we said like, we want to do a winery, a vineyard, and we want to do, you know, an oil refinery, right, like that would be like completely different disparate uses, and that would be like why you would say these things ultimately aren't congruent with each other. So, in certain cases, you'll see larger PADs with different zoning districts and a PAD overlaying on the whole thing. And essentially, what that does is that just talks about, you know, different uses that are supported, like, you know, in the, throughout the whole project, right? In this case, they're saying we're presenting, the different uses that we're presenting all fall into the GR zoning, and then this is how we're doing it. So, it's like a comprehensive approach to uses that are presented. And hence why certain reliefs from zoning, as part of the PAD, I should state, there's no minimum lot size requirement and so on and so forth. So, a lot of these things that they're asking for, this is the mechanism to be able to ask for them. So, it's not, it's not a outlandish request or something like that. It's.
And finally, Frank, there was mention of a commercial kitchen. Is there going to be a commercial kitchen? Or is it that going to be just for the people that are there and not open to, you know, people that are just coming to want to have dinner or anything?
So, right, so, so basically, it's a little, it's a little nuanced, right? So, basically, the way that the guest ranch use allows for food service to the guests, the overnight guests, which ultimately via the Health Department requires a commercial permit. So, in part of getting that commercial permit, right, they have to have a commercial kitchen onsite. So, for them to provide food to their overnight guests, a commercial kitchen to prepare that food and serve their guests is required. My site visit, you know, revealed, and, you know, review of site plans and staff review of site plans and so on and so forth, revealed that the commercial kitchen facility is actually very small. actually very small. It's not, you know, a typical commercial kitchen that you would see in like a normally commercially zoned project, where it's a destination restaurant, you know, similar to other, you know, establishments that you might see that are predominantly for food and beverage service. And the dining, the dining area ultimately, in the, the new tasting room, is essentially meant for the overnight guests, I think it seats maybe 18 people total. The intent, at least from what I understand, explained by the applicants, and I'm sure they would be happy to elaborate, is a dinner service. Now, that being said, there will be a commercial kitchen onsite, which ultimately, you know, if there were situations where there were folks that were in the, in the tasting room, it wouldn't inhibit the operators from serving them, you know, essentially a limited menu, but from my understanding, the intent is not a full-service restaurant and dining facility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Another couple of the questions that came up with, there were different numbers thrown out as a number of casitas that were going to be on this property?
So, the proposed amount of casitas on the property at this time is nine. The applicants, in, in asking for this request, they can ask for up to 15 per code, but the applicants have, you know, stated that they only, they're looking for a relatively low-impact development, at least at this time, they want nine casitas onsite. You know, they're under the understanding that in the future, if any of that changes, that they will have to go back through a PAD amendment, which is equally as onerous. So, again, that sort of reaffirms the point that everything is evaluated on a case-by-case basis, even cases that have been approved. So, you know, if this board chooses to approve this project, and it ends up moving forward, and they develop nine casitas, and they, in the future, want to come back and develop another six, they will have to go back through the process, P&amp;Z Commission, and ultimately the Board of Supervisors again, so.
Supervisor Mular, did you have any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Supervisor Reese?
I'm good, so.
Okay. One of the other things that came up, and it's, you know, based, looking at what's going on in Cochise County, as a county, would probably get a good idea, be a good idea for us to get a study of what's going on with water out there. Is that something that this board requests from Arizona Department of Water Resources, or not, they're not in the active management area? What are the steps that this board needs to take to do something like that?
We could, it's a good question, and we can look into it and find out what the best process forward for something like that is. You know, as, as you all are aware, I'm working with Angie Donaldson on a grant through the Economic Development Authority, that could also be a part of it. That's going to be more broad brush, kind of strokes to figure out just general planning for the area, but obviously, you want to figure out what the carrying capacity for an area is for any given use, and project growth, and so on and so forth, so all of that is, is part of it, looking at infrastructure existing and future needs, and, and ultimately, natural resources as well, so, because the last thing you would want is, you know, an adverse impact on natural resource, the point where, you know, it had an adverse impact on the community or, or future, future growth.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to, I'd appreciate hearing back from staff on that.
Sure.
Okay, well, there are no other questions? Is there, is there any public comment during this? Yes, ma'am. You need to come up to the podium.
Yeah.
And say your name, and.
I'm Leslie Fletcher, I live in Elgin. One of the things that I had a question on about the restaurant is, if you go to the Visit Arizona website, and other articles that have been published by Los Milos, and their future plans, they advertise that they are opening up a full-fledged restaurant. I think there's a lot of people in the community that believe it's a new restaurant for the area. The code currently says they cannot have a permit to do this. If they get the variance or the approval to, to get the permit, all the other wineries are essentially going to be allowed to do the same thing, and open up a full-fledged restaurant. You're changing the code. It's not just a one of. That's my comment.
Okay. Frank?
So, Mr. Chairman, I know while Frank comes up, can we have the applicants kind of address some of the issues too, because they're the ones that are, that are bringing it forward, and I think that at the end of the day, they're the ones that have to make the case for their, their request to go here, because it's a lot of, well, I see this, or I see that, we're going to do this, or you're going to do that. Now, let's hear it right from, from you, and then once Frank, if that's not a problem, Mr. Chairman.
That's a good idea.
Sure, I can, I can just quickly answer, speak to the technical aspects of, of that. So, as I mentioned momentarily, the, the intent of a PAD is that each of these cases are reviewed on a case-by-case basis. Something like a text amendment would be where we were changing the code in a way that every future, for example, if this board, if we, if these applicants had requested a text amendment to this board, and then board would have given staff a direction, to, given staff the direction to say, we would like you to amend the zoning code so that these types of uses will be included under the winery uses moving forward in GR, and then we went to the P&amp;Z Commission, they recommended approval, and then this board ultimately adopted that into ordinance, that would be a permanent change to the future regulations of the code, which would allow that type of use. But, again, the purpose for something like a PAD or a rezoning is that you're looking at these things on a case-by-case basis, and the burden is on the applicant to be able to demonstrate how they meet the criteria of the code and the intent of the code, and ultimately, how they're going to facilitate that type of development onsite, and mitigate any adverse impacts.
Thank you, Frank.
Sure.
Yes. And you state your name, and.
Good morning. My name is Linda Morales, I'm with the Planning Center representing the applicants, and I have the whole team here who are also available, if there are any questions that I may or may not be able to answer. So, so if, if you may, I, I'd be happy to take your lead, if there are particular questions you want me to address first, I had a few notes from the public speakers that I'd like to address.
Well, you address the stuff that the public speakers were bringing up.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Mular, uh, Bracker. So, so I wanted to hit, first of all, on, again, I think Frank has done an excellent job of talking about why we're pursuing the PAD, and, and that, just to reemphasize, that PAD overlays the existing GR zoning. As far as the questions about why are we changing the zoning, we're not changing the zoning. Why are we changing the, we're completely in conformance with the comprehensive plan, because we are also keeping with that rural nature, and we certainly don't want to drop a commercial restaurant in the middle of this, we don't want to do a hotel or anything like that. What we would like to do is to have this, under that guest ranch provision that is allowed during the, allowed by the GR zoning, pursue that. We already have the farm winery that allows the tasting room, so that is operational, I know that you've had a chance to visit the site already, so we have that, we have the tasting room that's under construction, that's all permitted currently. Under a conditional use permit, we could come back and ask for the guest ranch use that would allow the casitas, and would allow the kitchen that would serve the guests of those casitas. The problem is, is when you start overlaying those, they don't, don't go concurrently within the confines of this, the property that we have, and they wouldn't allow the configuration that we want to have. We, it's really important that we have some synergy, and we've, we, architect Tommy Sukar has done a masterful job of integrating these uses on the site, so that they interact, and they have synergy, but they also have kind of their separate areas on, on the site. So, we have the existing production facility, which currently serves as, as the tasting room, the Quanza Hut. We have the tasting room that's under construction in the middle of the site, that is surrounded by the vineyards, and really exists within the vineyards, and kind of looks like it's growing out of the vineyards. And then we have the casitas strategically placed with an easy walking distance of all those, but on the corner of the site, and in a configuration that is, is angled to take, take advantage of the amazing views that we have of the biscuit across that BLM land, and, and allow our guests to have that solitude, to enjoy the dark skies, to enjoy the rural nature of, of the winery, and to be out there, have their little bit of privacy, but easily able to walk over, have a meal, have some wine tasting, and, very importantly, not drive, to be able to stay on the site and be safe about that. So, again, we're staying within the zoning, as far as the precedent goes, absolutely what Mr. Dillon said, we are pursuing a PAD, it's not the easiest method of doing that, we started this process, actually, these gentlemen started this well before I was even part of the team, back in 2018, when they purchased the property, they had the vision, Jesse Drake was Planning Director at the time, and they talked to her about this, and there was not an understanding of that conditional use issue with the overlapping of the site, and trying to fit that on the 20 acres. So, later on down the road, working with Mr. Dillon, as we were starting to pursue those plans, and putting in the plans for the tasting room with the kitchen in it, we discovered that we had some other process to go through. We chose the PAD, because that allows us to do the vision, the original vision of this center, just a kind of wonderful development. But, but again, it's, it's a fairly long process, we started preparing this in the fall, went through the hearing, the original study session in January, we had two other meetings with the P&amp;Z, they, if you looked at the notes from those, definitely put us through the wringer, and, and made sure that we were demonstrating that we were doing a sustainable project, and that we were doing something that was fitting with the rural nature. As far as the, the commercial kitchen goes, that is absolutely intended to serve the overnight guests. It's very, very limited fine, we call it destination dining. It's one turn of the tables a night, so it's not like a restaurant where people are coming and going, 28 diners is our maximum capacity, so that would serve, you know, the, the casitas, we're, we're planning seven one bedrooms and two potential two bedrooms, so that's about 20 guests. There are a few extra tables by a reservation-only system that people could come in and dine. As far as the other things that the commercial kitchen could produce to, to serve guests, we would like to have an opportunity to have like a little sandwich, or a little cheese plate, or something like that, produced in that kitchen, that could be provided to wine tasting, guests, that are not necessarily staying overnight. Very, very modest, no signage, advertising a separate restaurant, it's, it's very much auxiliary to the tasting and the guest casitas use. As far as the water goes, again, one turn of the table, adding the casitas is a very negligible amount of water. The vineyards are already there, that's probably, that is the most water-intensive use on the site, and those are, again, already permitted, we're not here today to ask for permission to do those. But, but water conservation is key to us, and we, we respect the fact that it's going to be important to our whole state, and we want to work with that. I think those, there was a, a question about, about notice, and we did, we went, we sent letters out and offered to meet individually, we realized that it was better to be able to get people out, and to see the site, and so we did have a couple of people take us up on that, and we had some phone calls as a result of that, but that's how we did handle that notice. The notices were posted for both the Planning Commission and the, and this hearing, and per the, the requirements of the 15-day-plus notice. Any other questions I could answer, or the rest of my team?
Other question, couple for you? Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr., Mr. Fletcher.
Yep, John Fletcher from Elgin, again. Can you tell me if you're working with Twisted Union on a similar plan?
You need to speak into the microphone, please.
Sorry, are you working on a similar plan for Twisted Union, Union for, for casitas?
So, ask us the question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was to her, because she got.
No, you're asking us the question.
Okay, so I'd like to know, I'd like to know.
And then we'll ask Cindy to answer your question.
Okay, great, I'd like to know if they're working with Twisted Union in a similar fashion. I think that, who's going to monitor this commercial kitchen? Who's eating there, who's not eating there? I mean, who's going to go over there and find out what guests are, are staying, or are they coming out of the winery to eat? I mean, it seems to me, it's, it's not cut and dry, and I don't know who's going to monitor that, you know, so. Lastly, I think I'd like to say, I'd like the supervisors to delay any decision today on this, basically, because I don't think there has been enough debate on it, and I don't think it was properly posted, myself. What newspaper was the public notice, notice posted in? So, that's my questions.
You want me to repeat the questions?
I, I think that I have them, Supervisor Bracker, thank you. The first question, no, I am not working with any other winery, and I actually am not even familiar with that one yet, but I'm grateful for the gentleman to come out and speak for us. Who will monitor, this is a zoning, it's all laid out in the PAD, if we start doing things that are outside of that, it's a zoning violation, so Planning Department, Health Department will monitor the kitchen to make sure that we're in, in, in keeping with those regulations. And I will let Frank talk about publication, because Planning Department handles those, but each of the times that they have asked us to pick up the postings, we picked them up, we've posted them on the site, we've posted them on the highway, and then we've also posted them in the post office, and we have notarized statements. Actually, Pavle and Carla Milik did that on the last two themselves, my staff did the very first one, and, and I can attest that they were posted in a timely manner.
Okay. Mr. Dillon?
So, you want to have Frank answer the posting of the newspaper?
I'm going to ask him the posting, and, so, Mr. Dillon, we had, how many meetings did you have on, you had the meeting in January, you had a meeting in?
January, January, March, April, and then today.
And today. Okay.
And all of those are noticed publicly.
And they were posted in post office, posted in the paper?
Yeah, posted onsite, it posted, the No Gallows International.
One other thing, there's the local Sonoyta pages. There's, there's Facebook pages like Sonoyta.
Just a lead.
Yeah, sorry. Well, you're one of the people that's on there the most.
You have your opportunity to speak, if you want to speak, you can raise your hand, I can call on you. No outbursts from the audience, please.
There was several people putting on the Facebook, Sonoyta Residence pages on Facebook, that these meetings were going to be held, so, between what they did legally, and what other people opposed or for have posted, I'm just saying.
Okay. Okay. So, Frank, so all, all three of those meetings were noticed, then?
Yeah.
And then today's?
Four.
The fourth, today?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Shock, did you have a comment?
Thank you very much, Bill Shock from Elgin. I have two photos I took of how, how this was announced on the highway.
Okay, I'm counting the clerk. I've driven by those before, so I understand.
I took those just a few days ago, that was the main announcement we got. It's on, if you'll look at those, you'll see that it's on the corner of Highway 82 and Upper Elgin Road. It's right next to the sign saying Upper Elgin Road, there is no place to turn off, they're down on the ground, and they look almost like something that would come from a real estate company. Almost no one saw it, okay? As a result, I ended up getting signatures on a, on petitions, and with these signatures, what, what it took was, all, I found out all I needed to do was show them a picture of the, what they're doing, and people understood immediately. And people understood immediately that this was not acceptable in a GR zone. They took a look at how close the little cabins are at the last, and they understood basically what we're looking at here is a motel. It's a motel that has little cabins, just like on Route 66. It has a dining facility that's going to offer very good meals, and it's, anyway, it's basically a motel is what we're looking at. I came to you with petitions that were signed by over 100 people out there, and I wish you would take a look at the signatures, because the vast majority are community leaders. One of the best was Bill Break from the Rose Tree Ranch, who had absolutely no idea this was going to happen, and he has the lease right up almost to their property. None of us knew this was happening. I stood at the post office where they went in and out, and no one had any idea this was going on, even though there was a little yellow thing bent over in the corner and there, kind of above, and that's the only announcement anybody saw. The Nogales International isn't taken by anyone I know out there, because all the news is from Nogales. They used to have the Weekly Bulletin, which gave us a lot of information for the area. They discontinued that. The only thing we have now is the Patagonia Regional Times that comes out either once a month or once every two months, and it's a nice little paper, but that's about it. Okay, I want to go into water. They're talking, the main thing people told me was water. They were worried about it. Okay, I looked it up. Los Milics has two wells. One well is 660 feet deep, 560 feet deep, and it's a six-inch casing. It is rated by the ADWR at 40 gallons a day. The other well is 440 feet deep. It's a seven-inch casing, it's rated at 50 gallons a day. The main thing that hasn't been talked about here is how many gallons are they using. ADWR for commercial-type wells above 25 gallons a minute requires that you have a meter on it. We should, before we make any decisions, find out how much water they used in 2021, and maybe even up till now, and then also get an idea of how much they project to use with all of these little cabins they're going to build, and also with this first-class restaurant. And I know, anyway, what they need to do, from what I could gather, if an average family uses 120 gallons a day, you've got nine cabins, so no matter what, they're going to be using 100 gallons a day. You're going to be doing linens every day, which you don't do in a normal household. You're going to be doing all kinds of dishes and things at this restaurant, which includes giving, as Ms. Morales said the last time, they're going to have a, this restaurant is going to offer a limited menu for the visitors of the tasting room, like sandwiches, charcuterie, et cetera, and that the lodging will have a gourmet dining experience, will bring new visitors to the area. Well, this is sounding like a lot of water to me. I would like to know how much per minute they're pumping right now out of these two wells. I would like to know what their water usage was for the total year of last year. They should have all those records according to ADWR, and find out what we're really, find out what the scope of this is. But the major thing is, is that nobody knew about this in the community. And we have to recognize that we don't know. The community doesn't know. If you really want to find out, if Frank would like to find out what the community thinks, we could have a big meeting, and many people have suggested this, at the fairgrounds, like we did, we used to do with the assessor, Mr. Fuentes. He had quite an experience coming to the fairgrounds and visiting with the people about their valuations. And I think you'd find the same thing with a rezoning like this. This is not a small, they continually say these are minor changes. No one I spoke to thinks that these are minor changes. And this is not ready for prime time. We cannot allow this to continue forward until this gets a better review by the community. Remember, in the Planning and Zoning Commission, there were seven for, two against, two weren't for it, okay?
Seven one.
The two that weren't for it are from our area. All seven that were for it were from the Nogales, Rio Rico, and this area on the Santa Cruz. So they didn't listen to the people that live in the community and understand how the community thinks, rather they made decisions on people that don't have any skin in the game. So this is what we need to look at. We need to find out what the community really thinks, and the way over 100 signatures we got, that's just a start. I'm getting texts and called now, the people, yesterday afternoon and this morning, people that want to sign the petition. You have to realize, this is a big deal at our end of the county, and again, you really need to look at those signatures, because those are mostly community leaders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Little lady, she had her hand up.
Again, I came to a meeting where I did not plan to say anything. I'm not used to this, but I do like what Mr. Schock said. I really applaud that. My major concern is, why are they doing a PAD? Why do they need to overlay the zoning laws? Why did they buy such a small amount of land? I mean, I used to own 40 acres. This is 20 acres. And the gentleman earlier who spoke said, at least at this time, there are implications for the future planning. Why so much development on such a small piece of property? I think that encapsulates my reaction.
Thank you.
I'm all for development, not against that, but why such a small piece of land? And the vision comes from 2018, that's a long time ago, so it's not small.
Thank you.
I don't know if I like or dislike the look that you give me when I come up here. Anyways.
I'm Anita K., once again, Sonoda. I'm not against more wineries. I'm against us allowing variances in our zoning that might cause domino effects. What I'm hearing out and about in Sonoda is that people are very uncomfortable about their water. I like that you might be taking an initiative to having a better water and hydrological survey of the area. That would probably quell a lot of the unrest. Another thing, and coming from business owner, the last thing you want to hear is what you need to do and what you should do. But as a resident of your county, one of your constituents, I would advise you to change the way you notify us on the side of the road, because when you have an eight-and-a-half-by-14 piece of paper, this, it's hidden in the grass. People don't slow down, they're going 65 down the highway. It's not a good way to notify of changes that they feel might impact them personally. And to say, oh, we notified everybody within 600 feet. 600 feet out there? Jesus, Johnson, there's no one, there's a cow. Did you tell the cow, hey, there's a new well that's pumping 50 gallons a minute over here? People are alarmed, and they just want to be included. That's what I'm hearing, is that people are feeling they're not included in the decisions that are made here. And going back to commercial kitchens and wineries, okay, yeah, it might be a good dining experience. What happens when they sell that? What happens when they decide they want to sell that winery, and now there's a commercial kitchen there that could possibly be slid under the radar and made into a restaurant out in the middle of nowhere? That's another thing that needs to be addressed here with the commercial kitchens within the winery and what they are allowed to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anita. So I think the commercial kitchen in the winery has been addressed. That gets addressed by Health Department. It also gets, it's a zoning violation if that gets changed. So that's pretty much been put to bed in my mind, so.
Oh, you have more? So going back to Airbnbs, everybody wants to put their little rental as an Airbnb now. There is no low-end rentals for people to actually live in Sonoda. Every time a commercial kitchen goes in, it guts my workforce. It doesn't, I'm not saying that, oh, I don't want another restaurant to compete with. What I'm saying is, nobody will drive into Sonoda for these low-wage jobs. So I look at that more as a challenge to my operations, not my profits. Something has got to give here with, between lodging and the Airbnbs, and where people actually live in Sonoda. That's, it's a big deal. It is.
Thanks, Anita. Any other comments? Okay. Supervisor Moletta, do you have anything at this time? Before we close the public hearing?
Listen, Chair, I just want to ask, I want to thank all the commentants, you know, on both sides, and I want to thank Frank for doing his due diligence, and thank our zoning committee as well. It's always hard for change, you know? I had the privilege of listening to both sides via emails, via phone calls, and I also had the privilege of visiting the actual winery. And I think the plans are ideal, and I always fear for people going to our great wineries and sipping here, sipping there, and then getting back on the freeway. So the opportunity for people to actually stay there, I think, is great, and it's not a full, all-out hotel, but it still keeps it as a, it's a small community. And it seems to be like the kitchen is going to be amazing, the person running it is a well-known chef, so I'm personally excited about it. And, you know, while there's the fear of change, I think this is good change, in my opinion. And those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Moletta. Supervisor Reese?
So, a few things. Number one is, I know this board has no authority over any other water issues, and I think what Supervisor Brackler recommended earlier is that we need to get a good grasp of what's going on. I understand we've been in a heavy drought cycle now for a lot of time, the rains haven't been coming in, and I think that's why we've seen a lot of fires out there, that we really have a lot of dry brush, and that's not good for our area. You know, it's, I think that a lot has been mentioned about our code and everything, and I think that there are options in our code to be able to do things like this. And it doesn't necessarily mean that if one PAD is approved, that the next one will. There is a process, and that process, it looks like, has been laid out over several months, several meetings. I do, however, kind of agree that we need to do a better job of how we notify people. And I know that state statute is very specific, and I know there are ordinances, and I, for one, would be willing to try to find out what the best way would be to do it out in rural Santa Cruz County. I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that you're driving there, you're trying to see that there's nothing coming out in front of your car, not what's down on the side of the street, and those are things, but because they are by state statute, because they are by ordinance, we at the Planning and Zoning are following the law. And not that we want to hide anything, or not that we want to do anything. Perhaps there's a better way to post it in the post office as well, but I don't think that any of those things that were done to try to deceive anybody, we followed the law as the way it is written now. And so maybe we need to go and revisit that and have a different way of doing it where the cows are not the only ones reading the ordinance, or the horses for that matter, but I think we can do that. The other thing, too, is supervisors, when we appoint people to our Planning and Zoning Commission, we really allow them free rein. So I'm not meeting with my three appointees and say, this is what I want you to do. They're free thinkers, they go ahead, and they do what they feel at the end of the day is in the best interest, not what's in the best interest of Manny Reese Supervisor who appointed them. I did, however, call one of my, to find out exactly, and he told me, he says, look, I went out there with Frank by myself, I didn't want to go with the other members, I didn't want people to come along, I wanted to see for myself. And that's what he did. And I think that every member of the Planning and Zoning Commission has the same opportunity to do that. And getting back to water, I know I've been fortunate that I went to a meeting and I met this company, and I'm sure they're not the only one, but there's a company out of Israel that is really cutting-edge when it comes to irrigation, to watering. As you know, unfortunately, here, and even when you go up to Phoenix, when you see the cotton fields and all that, they're doing that, where they let all the water go out onto the field. And this company has really devised something, and I'm sure there's others, and I don't remember their name, so I'm not going to give them a plug, but they are finding ways to better use the water to make sure that it doesn't all evaporate or sink and go away. So, I mean, at the end of the day, I'm hopeful that when ADWR, somebody brings some kind of report to the board, as was requested, that we can, again, begin to look at how we're going to protect the water in this community. And it's not just what's happening out in Sonoda, it's happening here in Nogales, Rio Rico, and Toubac. We need to be very, very careful, and I think water is going to be the new goal. I mean, we live in a state that's very arid. We share the Colorado River with four states and a foreign country, so there are a lot of things that are occurring when it comes to this. So to our commissioners, those that voted for, those against, I think there was one You know, thank you for listening, Frank and your staff, and to the applicants. You know, I'm sure that you're trying to do something that's positive. And finally, I think that what was mentioned about affordable housing, it's not just happening here, or housing affordability. Every big town is having problems having housing that people can afford, even on the minimum wage, I think here in Arizona is $12.
Fifty cents.
And 50 cents. You know, rents are so high now, gas prices are so high, so there's a lot of things that are affecting, and I agree, I mean, nobody's going to want to, you know, spend 100 bucks a week to go out to a destination somewhere to work, and at the end of the day, wind up losing money. So thank you for your presentation, thank you for your comments. I do appreciate that, and perhaps in the future, if there are things there, we will sit down with our planning director, and as was suggested by you, is have at least one hearing out there so that people have the opportunity to be able to submit their comments, and at the end of the day, have the commission see all sides of the issue before they take action and make a recommendation to this board. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Reese. Excuse me. So one of the things I'd like to say is, the three members of the board that I appointed and asked for their opinions were split. I had somebody who agreed with it, I had somebody who abstained, and I... And I have somebody who objected. And the objection was based on water use, which really is a challenging thing right now, because it's a long-term study. And we're not, it's gonna be a long time before we have an answer on water. Noticing meetings in Sonoyta, it is always a challenge. We have certain laws that the state of Arizona tells us. When you're gonna do a PAD, you have to do XYZ for noticing. And that's what we have to do. We don't get to vary that. We don't get to say, "But we're gonna do this instead." We, the Santa Cruz County, uses the O'Gallas International for all its public notices. And it's a challenge. I mean, I have a digital subscription, and that's how I keep up with everything that I need to know. You know, I read stories about what's happening in the East County on the Patagonia Regional Times. We just, it's hard for, it's hard for us when we're trying to do the outreach, and we try to do the outreach, to have people say they're not hearing it. Because you can always say, "In what form would you like it delivered to you, and to you, and to you?" But we're a governmental entity. We can't do 20 different forms of notifications. So, these are the notifications that we do. Posting in a post office, where I live in Tubac, that's how we get notifications. Everybody goes to their post office. And you, everybody reads the bulletin boards, and everybody sees what's going on. And then people talk, and people have their coffee groups, and there are different organizations that they belong to, and that's how the word spreads. And then in this new world of social media, which I'm not a star in, there's information available that way, but people are posting that amongst themselves. It's really not something that the county does as an official means of notification. We're following the state regulations. As far as, you know, when we talked about doing planned area development pads and overlays, these are processes that are available to everybody. And these are processes that are not a guarantee. And it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of money for people that wanna go through those types of processes. But it's something that we do as a county. It's a function that allows people to make modifications, slight modifications, to what they wanna do on their properties. And you can do it, you know, Frank said that there are three different forms of doing variances. And if you're a property owner and you wanna change something, or you wanna build a wall that's a little bit too close, then there's a reason, because your house was built in the 50s and it wasn't set back right. Or, I mean, there are remedies for all these types of things. And that's what Mucos is doing here. They're asking for a remedy to something that they're trying to do. So, I wanna thank everybody for their time. I know it's an effort to get into O'Gallas from Sonoyta. And I appreciate all the effort that you guys have put into it, both the people that have supported this project and the people that are opposed to this project. I just wanna thank you for your community engagement. And I appreciate the emails and the phone calls. And I think that's it. Pardon?
Is it too late to ask a question?
Is it too late for you to ask a question? Yeah, we had, I closed it, so I'm sorry.
You can ask afterwards.
You can ask afterwards.
Or during the, when we act on it, if we.
You can ask during, when we act on it, but I'm gonna close the hearing right now. So, do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I will move to adjourn the public hearing. Do you wanna go into the study session?
No, I actually.
To the action item?
I wanna go into the action item after.
So, I'll move that we adjourn public hearing and go to regular session.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. The public hearing is over. We're in action items, so we're gonna go to action item. Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Which is discussion, possible action to approve the intermediate plan and development guidelines for Los Mucos Vineyards, planned area development for parcel number 109-47-041M, case number PAD-22-01, approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 28, 2022.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion, second, under discussion. I will ask for your question. Do you have a question?
I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Angela Gervasi. I'm currently the only reporter with the O'Gallas International. And I know we were talking about the importance of notifying the public. And, you know, I do wonder, when it comes to issues like these, why doesn't the county consider posting on your Facebook page? I mean, it's your official Facebook page. Before moving here five months ago, I lived in Coconino County. I was an early morning radio host. And I was able to wake up early and look at the Facebook page for Coconino County and see if something was happening. So, I mean, I'm in all the Sonoyta Facebook groups, where there is quite a bit of circulation and discussion. And I think that's really, at the risk of sounding biased, I think that's really crucial for residents in 2022 who are trying to hear about things. So, is that something you would consider in the future?
I will ask staff to consider that. Thank you very much for your suggestion. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor of approval of the variance in the PAD?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye, the motion carries unanimously. Okay. We're gonna move to go into the study session.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we recess our regular session and convene to the study session for a presentation from Public Works.
You wanna do the study session?
Yeah, let's do it. And then we can take the action item and then go into executive session, right?
Sounds good to me. So, we're, all those in favor, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I think Rudy seconded it.
Okay, we have a motion, seconded, any discussion? So, we're gonna move into our study session from the presentation on Public Works Capital Improvement Program and Other Projects.
Aye.
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 And the motion carries, and we are in study session. We're gonna, we're gonna hold on for a few minutes while people move around.
Gonna take a small break, five minutes.
Let's take a five, Rudy, do you mind if we take a five-minute break?
None at all.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and we're gonna come back and resume the study session. Okay, I'd like to call us back into order. We're gonna reconvene into our study session. Presentation on Public Works Capital Improvement Program and Other Projects. Mr. Valdez?
Mr. Chair, thank you. We lost our audience. But if you guys have questions, please, it's gonna be more. She's part of the team now.
Rudy, are you back on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanna make sure you're with us.
Okay, so, I get, I can click with this one? Yes, okay. So, I'm just gonna go to the next slide. So, our next slide is, here's the objectives that we wanna accomplish with this presentation. A brief overview of past projects. Then we wanna present the two-year program. Okay. Discuss funding issues and maybe some strategies. And then talk about emerging industry studies and projects. Okay. This is, these are, these are, I selected, gonna count about eight, nine projects that we've done since I can remember. These are more of the highlights that we've done. In flood, we did the Glodeon Flood Control Basin and Lomar. So, the Lomar, all it means is letter of map revision that takes people out of the flood plain. Then we went to Nogalitos Flood Control Basin. We also did the Gilberto Drainage and Roadway Improvements. That triggered the Aguafria Lomar. And then we did the Galalampi Lomar, Calabasas Lomar, Keno Springs Lomar, Monte Carlo Lomar. As we move forward, I think, you know, doing letter of map revision, selecting population centers throughout the county is something that we wanna continue doing. And that's within our, you know, within our, what we're doing for our capital improvement program. Keeping with the same theme of, the federal projects that we had completed is the Rio Rico Pendleton Intersection, Ruby Road and Pendleton Intersection. Those were improvements where we added lanes and capacity. On the Rio Rico one, we actually, a signal was constructed. And then Pendleton Drive Bicycle Lanes, that's the paved shoulders. We've also done some CDB jeans, some CMAC. But that falls under the, those projects fall under our maintenance program. And then roadway, what we've been able to do without a, sorry. So, in roadway, what we've been able to do without a dedicated tax source is using our HERF allocation. We've been able to do, like I said, a CIP. In roadway, we did Algen Road Reconstruction, about three miles. So, we went in there, what'd you call it? Yeah, reclaimed, and then double-chipped, and frog-sealed, and it came out. It's one of the more successful projects that we've had. We also did the Keno Springs Box Colbert, Lito Galindo, and West Frontage Road Intersection, and then the Pet Canyon Roundabout. Those, again, without a dedicated tax base, only the HERF allocation that is used for operations and maintenance. Our trail, Pendleton Drive Trail, Palo Parado to Rio Rico, and then with the West Frontage Trail Extension, Camino del Batido to Yavapai Drive. Those are the most, the two current stretches that we've done. Cluster-wise, we chipped since 2013 over 200 miles of roadways, and surfaced.
Can you explain what a cluster is?
It'd probably help if I go to the next slide. So, we broke down all the county roads into 20-mile clusters. I think we came about 20, 20 clusters. So far, since 2013, we did over 200. And we've been able to address a few, the table on the right shows us the percentage of the clusters that we addressed. Off the top of my head, we just, you know, we've done all of 11. Most of 15, five, six, seven. I can't see the numbers. And then we've also done some work in Sonoyta.
Nineteen.
And we've also, through this program, been able to address some, like Calle Plaza. It was during monsoons, it really, the rains really affected the road. It got really slippery. So, we were able to double-chip it. And so far, so good. It's gone through two monsoon seasons, and the residents seem to be happy. And emergency service could get out there. Mr. Chair, you have any additional questions?
Thanks for explaining what a cluster is.
That was the, just the highlights of what we've done. Thank you guys for the support and allowing us to, you know, get those projects constructed. They've been good for the community. Now, we're gonna jump into the two-year program. Initially, what I, during the budget preparations, I submitted what you have in your, in your packet. I omitted the maintenance of the buildings, because I don't think we still have a solid strategy that we came up with. But what I'm gonna present to you is this, I think, a more solidified strategy. And it's gonna be parks, and it's gonna be flood and roadway. Under parks, it's Daman tennis courts, Daman basketball court improvements, Daman miscellaneous. And that's just to address some of the seating, some of the recreational facilities that we have jungle gyms, fencing, stuff like that. Moving on, Calabasas Basketball Court Improvements. I got that slated for fiscal year 2024. Calabasas Access Improvement, that's for this upcoming fiscal year. Same thing, Calabasas Miscellaneous. From 2010, things break, jungle gyms, replacement. That's the intent of the miscellaneous. Moving on, Morris, Ramorres Parking Lot. We need to do something regarding access and how the park and the maintenance in the park get access. And you'll see that Morris Miscellaneous, that's just a, I'm hoping to keep that every year so that we could address some of the things that are not foreseen. The last one is, when it comes to maintenance, is Chilla Vista Basketball Courts Improvement. And I think I put some funding in for the following fiscal year. Under parks, under new construction and study, what I'm recommending to you guys, to the board, is the Daman soccer football fields. That's something that was voted on earlier this year. So, what we wanna, what you're seeing right now is 60,000. And that's for design and anything that has to do with permitting. The bulk, public participation, we still need to go to, we're in the process of designing, coming up with the concept and going through a public process. If everything's successful, we apply for the grant. And if we're successful, then that's where you see the fiscal year 2024 with the $2 million. Although the grants for $1 million, I foresee needing more money. Something that's been discussed before is the Calabasas Fields. It's that property that we acquired from the city. And one of the mandates is for us to put soccer fields on it. This would be an attempt from, through Public Works, to take, to do a project where in-house forces, along with contractors, would do the site preparation. Right now, we feel $400,000 this year and $400,000 next year. Other projects being discussed is the Pendleton and Paseo Mexico Pocket Park. For design, we're looking for $10,000 this year, for construction, $700 next year. And something that would help us, guide us, and we could use as a tool, is the Parks Master Plan. I think we could start it towards the end of the year. And we're asking for $75,000 this year and $70,000 next year. Please don't pay attention to the totals. I may not have gotten it correctly. Yeah.
So, with that all being said, not all of this is budgeted into the, into this fiscal year's budget for the 2023 line items. As Jesus mentioned, some of those, we're expecting to get grants. For the parks budget, even without everything being budgeted, we've increased the parks grant $170,000. So, I'm not sure. I think we're just looking for a direction on which one of these are, you all are wanting to do sooner rather than later. I don't know if you have anything to add, Jesus, but I just wanted to let you know from a budgetary standpoint, we do not have all this budgeted.
Agreed, agreed. It's a lot to take in in one presentation, so maybe we'll have to do a second. But this is what the thought process when we went through budget preparations. Flood, earlier today, the first one is Effren Canyon Basin Design and Effren Canyon Construction. We, it's like, once again, the grant that we receive, it's a reimbursable grant. I mean, all these numbers are subject to me being right, and that never happens. We think that the designs, we could do for $200,000, and that would require. And that will require us to go through our RFQ process and, and qualify our consultants. We think we could get the design completed by this calendar year. And hopefully start construction as soon as next year. We think we could, we could spend up to 2 million dollars in construction. The county, if we look at face value of what the contract says, would be responsible for 500,000. So 25, so 50,000, half a million dollars.
Just a zero somewhere.
Yeah, what's a zero among friends, right?
Famous quote, a billion here and a billion there, at some point when you're talking about real money.
Right. There's more to come with this project that I want to advise you guys on. Since this is just a review, I'll just leave it at that right now.
Just make sure you let the designers know, we have 800 million, we have 8, 8 million dollars. They should try to design something that's close to 8 million dollars.
Yeah, I, I agree, we're working hard, we're trying to strategize, make sure that we have a concise scope of work that when we publish and solicit. That way they are working, we could actually get something constructed. It's going to be a great project. Maybe we'll get, make Marcy happy.
Well, I think what will eventually happen is that whole Western Avenue and stuff will be way out and then they won't have to worry as much, so. Oh, I'm sorry. I said, I know the Western Avenue people will be happy and not have to worry about, you know, the floodwaters that are coming there or they go underneath that small little lava bridge, even though you clean it out constantly, you still get the sediment built up and get water flowing off on the street and into some of the homes.
I agree with you Supervisor Reese. Then the next, the next project that we're looking at is the Downtown Nogales Remapping Detail Study. All practically, with all practical purposes, the study's done, the modeling has been accepted. The, some of the, the two issues, actually the big issue is we're trying to remove the floodway from that area. They didn't serve us, so we might have to ask you guys for help politically. Right now, we, in the last six months, we've been asking for, for some sort of guidance, they haven't given it.
Just let us know who we need to contact.
Next, next project's the Watershed Management Plan. We're asking for 20,000 dollars, just, you guys know the, the plan is to look at those four basins and so that we could circulate it. And we're talking about the plan and that, that's going to help Nogales, that's going to help the RBWC. And, and any future development that occurs near that area.
That also works back, ties back into what the Council General is trying to do in Nogales Sonora and that whole project. And then the downtown remapping study that we did, we've already turned that information over to GSA to facilitate their study of the Deconsini Port of Entry also. So a lot of this, a lot of this work is already done. A lot of this stuff is already being put into, to use.
Yeah, we just need for them to approve it and give us the LOMAR.
Yes, sir. The next project, that's the Baba Kamari Bridge Rehab Lead Paint Update. ADA does our bridge inspections every two years. That's one of the projects that we've not been able to get to. It's sandblasted and, and repaint it. That Baba Kamari Bridge is in Algen Road. I have it slated for next year fiscal year. The next project is the Ruby Road over Potrero Creek Abutment Rehab. That's slated for next year. Our currently, our bridge, our, the abutment, the east side abutment needs some work done to it. And we're actually trying to get a permit. The, we'll do the project if we're not successful getting funding for the, for the replacement bridge. And then for the next side of the City of Nogales IG Maintenance, that's something that's ongoing.
I was excited about that.
It's worked well.
I think we all were.
Our roads, under roads, we have the West Frontage Yabapai Intersection Improvement Design. We want, what we want to do is come with the design in preparation, see what we call shovel ready. I think the first thing that we maybe want to do is, is look at alternatives so that we could move forward and see what the developer thinks and see what ADA thinks and hopefully get it programmed. The next project is Congress Drive Road Rehabilitation.
County manager's up on the body.
Unfortunately, we just never, we haven't gone to it. I think there's things that we have to consider when we do that project. There's some reconfigurations that I want you guys to, that we need to strategize about and maybe consider.
It's become a thoroughfare.
Yes, sir.
Thoroughfare, excuse me, yeah, so it makes it, even when you're trying to back out, you have to be very careful because you don't know who's speeding up this way or who's coming up this way, so absolutely.
Sure. And I think what we do outside to our parking lot in the road itself has to match what we're trying to do with the building. And I purposely left the projects that we identified in this building. They're substantial and we still haven't looked at the funding and I'm, so we don't have a, a strategy that, to present to you guys just yet. Next project is the same one, one is design, one is construction. You want to talk about design a little bit, where we're at?
With the design, we're substantially complete. It's at the stage where we're actively pursuing funding. At one of our last meetings, SEAL awarded us 3 million dollars, but that got put on hold when the state legislature rescinded some of those projects. What we're hearing now is that the Senate is pushing for it. So come the end of this fiscal year, we're being told that it's probably going to look favorable that, that not only that project, the Ruby Road Intersection, the Frontage Road, all those projects are probably going to get back, put back on cue. So between that 3 million dollars, you know, other funding sources that we've identified, everything's looking pretty favorable. So hopefully it'll be back on track.
Thanks, Leonard. So if we, if we're successful and get those funds, that will put us in the, in the SEAL tip and in the state stip. So officially, we will be like shovel ready, even though we're, you know, when look at document wise, we're shovel ready now. That will officially put us in, in the stip.
Stip makes you eligible for federal funding?
Some of the guidance that we see in, in the, in the grants, it doesn't spell it out directly, but it gives high priority to the projects that are in the stip because it implies that you're shovel ready. The next project that we identify is Algen Road, roadway and drainage. We've done about three miles, we have two miles left. And it's the process where we reclaim the existing roadway and recompact it, add material needed and then re-double chip it and fog it. It's, it's minimized the maintenance that we've had to do with down there. And I think overall, it's been very successful, the winners like it, so. I think we could do a mile for 500,000 this year and next year probably a million, knowing if the escalation of cost when it related to transportation. The next one is our CHIPS Seal Program. We have 2 million dollars. For this year and 750 for next year. The 2 million dollars is, I think, if we look at that now, is just for, is for one cluster. In the past years, we've been able to do one cluster of 20 miles for 800,000, between 800,000 and a million. Our, our oil quantity, our oil costs doubled. While you won't see that same cost now as we were able to buy enough chips. So the chips that we have now is, is, is we purchased them two years ago. But we're going to have to go and re-advertise and, and buy some chips or aggregate. And we'll talk about the strategy in the next upcoming. Trail wise, the one trail we're looking at is the Chilla Vista Sadowak Rehab, 100,000 dollars. Look to complete the Bridge Road Trail from the school to the library. And the school, I'm, I'm not so sure the school is still, is going to be there, but it's the Montessori School. Overweight projects, we have the Cape Road Phase Two, roadway improvements, about a million dollars later for next year. Federal projects that, that, that we have now is shovel ready is the Pendleton Drive Box Colbert over Sonora Creek. We have a shortfall of 1.3 million dollars.
We might, we might be able to capture some, some, some additional funding, SEAL again at the end of this fiscal year. Looking into the, into the next fiscal year. If they have any surplus, we're in line to get some of that funding, so that's going to go towards those costs.
It's, it's one of those projects that we've been identified for ever since I've been here. We were lucky enough to get that grant, unfortunately, you know, it was, it was pre-COVID and before the escalation of the costs. That will save us, that will save the, our, that will save us some maintenance costs. And also will help out our residents when that's, yeah, the Sonora Creek runs at least 10 times a year. Other projects and studies that were not included in there, but just so you know that we haven't forgotten, is the Ramanote and the West Frontage Intersection. That's where the, that's where the materials pits at. Cape Road Box Colbert. Clusters 3, 4, 12, 13 and 14. Baffert Drive Flood Control Basin, Harshaw Road Improvement. Regional Traffic Forecast Models. North Corridor Extension Analysis. West Frontage Connection Study, Cala Lamping to Yabapai. And then West Frontage Connection Study from Rio Rico Landfield to Palo Parado TI. Those, the last three studies, analysis, those were probably be performed with community development. Funding issues and strategies. So this is a look, this is a snapshot of the last four years of, of the HERF revenues and how we're doing this year. This, this, these figures do not include VLT or overweight or right-of-way permit fees. If you look at fiscal year 22, we're a little bit ahead of, we're catching up to fiscal year 20, which is, if you look at this, how fiscal year 20 was the highest in what I'm presenting here. But even though we're tracking and we're actually, you know, probably percentage wise, 3, 4, 5% higher than fiscal year 20, it's still not keeping up with inflation. This is the American Rescue Plan Act that was presented two months ago, three months ago, by Finance. And, and this plan, it shows that the road fund revenue, the funding could, from the plan, from the ARPA plan could up to 2.56, 2 millions, 565 million dollars could be allocated to Rome, to the road fund for revenue loss. Just wanted to bring that up, that this will help us get the next, yeah, the next cluster constructed or even supplement the, the funding needed for that Box Colbert. I'm going to jump into the, probably the, the last section, which includes, you know, our, some of the emerging, emerging industries in our county. This concludes a portion of the, of the CIP or, and maybe the, and also the, the strategies, the revenue strategy. So if you guys have any questions before I move on, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, I, you know, first of all, thank you for the CIP overview. I know that there's still a lot of great things that you've been doing and I'm sure there's some more things that will, will come out of it. And I know that at some point, Jennifer, we need to bring just a parks study session in action to the board in the future. So that'll be, I think, something that we need to review as well and go forward and act on that. So the other thing too, that I think is going to affect us is going to be the mine. And that's going to have a significant impact on what we do with infrastructure and resources. So I know that as, as we move forward, Jesus, there's, you're probably going to have to, well, overseeing everything else, you know, focus on, you know, what our needs are going to be and those of the mine and what their activities are going to be and what impact it's going to have, because I think we need to be prepared when all that comes down. So I, I think most of the stuff that you've covered here is great and I think, you know, we're on the right direction. So I know we're going to, we have an action item later, so.
I'm just going to reach you a statement regarding emergency industries, studies and projects.
If I could respond to Supervisor Reese, just so you know, in Jesus's parks budget, there was the 75 dollar master plan for the parks and that is included in the upcoming budget year. So we do agree that that's a valuable tool to, you know, define how we move forward. So just in response to a study session for parks, we will be.
Well, but I mean, look, he presented a lot of stuff here, so I think it's better if we act on it alone. I mean, I know roads, streets and everything, but, you know, how are we going to do, the city gave us this land, how are we going to do? So I'd rather just have that be separate, so that's the only thing.
I'd like to just reach, read the statement regarding, says with the development of mining operating, mining operations in the county ancillary industries will also look to develop and locate in Santa Cruz County. These new developments are required to adhere to the county's regulations. One of these industries, a railhead facility that would be loading freight and cargo onto the railroad. The development, the development and these types of facilities will bring economic diversity and prosperity. I think all that's true. But these types of facilities, so all. I think all that's true, but these types of facilities will also have an impact on infrastructure and emergency service that will need to be mitigated. The stress and load that will be placed on county departments unknown and will require planning and analysis. A strategy will need to be developed in order to accurately understand these impacts and to mitigate any financial implications on the taxpayers.
So, so again, that, to my point, is that even though I spoke a little ahead of it, it's still an impact that we need to face, and there's still a lot of things going on. There is evident, I mean, you know, we've been going over and over, getting the, the land donation, doing some of these other things. So when you look at the overall picture, those are some, some of the things that we're gonna, going to have to, to address, and have the resources and staff and everything necessary to be able to move forward, so.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Supervisor Reese, this is the Nebraska Innovation Park. There's nothing to do with this. These are concepts that are being talked about, which speaks to the first paragraph of our, of the statement. There's so, so many unknowns that we, we, I, I don't wanna talk specifically of what's going on, but there is an opportunity, there is some, there's an opportunity that something like this could happen in our county. It's gonna happen somewhere. So just to, this speaks to, to the first paragraph that I read. With that, I'll open up to any questions you guys might have.
Supervisor Malarra, do you have any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Jesus, thank you for the detailed report. It's, it's amazing how much public work has done over the last couple of years. The, the bridge in San Francisco Springs, the, the Rockways, the Rockway you just completed was amazing, on Pendleton. You know, the, the mapping, all the new mapping that you've done and the new mapping in the future is also real critical, because we can do a lot of creative stuff downtown in, in a partnership with the city, hopefully, down the road. It's just, it's really exciting times, to be honest, with the mine coming on board. It's, it's very exciting. I'm super excited. I think one, one thing I'd like to see is, I believe, a key item was brought up earlier about public input. I think when we deal with parks, it's gonna be critical that we have a lot of public input, because I, I personally don't like the conflict between Bruce and I. I'd like to see the public have more, more input. I believe Bruce made that comment a couple of months ago, and I, and I agree with him. I think it should be up to the public and see what they want as far as parks. And just, you know, really look at what we want in, in the future, and what our necessities are. But again, Jesus, thank you. Thank you, thank Leonard and all your departments for all that you guys have done. Your creativity with limited funds is amazing, and I'm just excited to see what, what's gonna come in the future. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Malarra, thank you for the kind words.
Supervisor Reese?
No, I, I, I think a lot of good stuff, and, and I know Jennifer mentioned the Parks Master Plan. I think that's the opportunity at a separate to discuss and really, at that point, identify how we wanna proceed, and, and if we want to entertain some public comment, as was suggested by Supervisor Malarra, then we can agree to have all those components in there to move forward. So I think you, Leonard, and everybody have, have done a, a great job, Jesus, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Valdez, thank you very much for your presentation. I think that these are really, really important tools that I'm not sure we've really taken advantage of in the past to really come out to the public and really shown what we've been doing over the past three to five years. It really is a tremendous book when you look at what they've done with flood, with the, with the LoMars and getting areas out of flood zone. Studies that we've done, as I mentioned earlier, with downtown Nogales, and being able to share that information with the Council General and Nogales Sonora, and also with GSA, because one of the huge economic engines in our community are our ports of entry, and we've been working on deconsigny port of entry reconfiguration for a long time. We've finally gotten it on a feasibility study level, which is the first step. But all the other tools that need to go into what GSA needs to do that planning, that study was, was, was critical to that. But just the amount of work that you've been doing on roads, and people notice it when it happens in front of their house or when it happens on their way home, but they don't see it when it happens to their neighbors. The division of the, you know, creating the clusters and attacking the clusters was, you know, is, is a really strong tool that you guys have brought to the table for us and has been really, really effective. And just rely, and just having the supervisors rely on your expertise as to what goes next. You know, we'd all like to see stuff happen in our districts, obviously. You know, District Three, you can spend all the money you want there, it's fine with me. But, you know, you guys have to, you guys have to rate the roads, and that's what you do for a living, so the work that you've done there. And then the trails, of course, probably one of the most popular things that we do for the public just to use, and not, it's not a means of getting from home to work, but it's a quality of life issue for our community, and they really, really do get used. I can't tell you, when I drove, you know, this last week and saw that, you told me that you completed that Palo Parado de Ruby to Rio Rico Drive, and just, it's, it's an amazing section of, of the project and what you did on the West Frontage Road a couple of years ago. I know we got delayed by pandemic, and then delayed by pandemic, and delayed by pandemic, but your, your, your staff was providing critical services in our vaccination and in our testing and in our, you know, as a county, we pulled together, is not just our, just not our workforce, but with Mariposa and lots of volunteers to make that happen for our community. And it was critical, you know, that we did that at that time, and, you know, the delays on some of these projects that we wanted to get done versus the stuff that had to get done, that's just the way it is. So I encourage you to just continually do this report once a year, just bring us up to date, let people know. Jennifer, I hope that we're able to get some of this stuff into social media, because I think it's really important that we start, the county start using social media as a component of communication. And I know it's hard to get this stuff off the ground, it's hard to get everybody used to doing it, but it's, it's an important, it's an important tool for us as a, as a county, as a government entity to communicate with, with people. So, point well taken, thank you very much, Angela. And that's.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, one, one more thing. Thank you for the kind words. I deserve very little of that. It's, it's our, it's our crew, to be honest with you, and Leonard and John and Angie. I have very little to do with that. Thank you.
You can thank them, too.
And to follow up, Supervisor Brecker, we do post those planning and zoning meetings on social media. We did confirm that in our break, and I believe we had seven different posts just yesterday alone, you know, from our animal control new ordinance, to the fire updates, to the Agenda Center, just on Facebook and Twitter. So we are definitely trying to do that in a better manner, more frequent, more often, so on and so forth.
Glad to hear it.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to adjourn our study session, convene regular meeting.
Hear motion, do I have a second?
You have a second.
Okay, then we have a motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, and our study session is closed, and we're into our regular meeting, and we have an action item on the study session, which is item?
Five.
Five.
You gonna read it? Item five.
I'm trying to find it. It's on the second page.
Yeah, that's right, you're writing on the, on the agenda on the back.
I'm writing on the back of my agenda. So item five is discussion, possible action to approve and give direction to Public Works Capital Improvement Program for 2023 and 2024 and other projects.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we adopt the CIP as presented, and we allocate the two million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan to, for the road fund, of the road fund, for the implementation of the CIP, and direct Jesus Valdez, Deputy County Manager, to oversee and any and all related businesses associated with the CIP, including the mine inland port, including required staff and consultants, and report to the board on a monthly basis. So we have an idea of what's going on.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
So I have a motion and a second, and under discussion, the number that Supervisor Reese called out, that was a number, can you talk to us about where that number came from?
Okay, was the, so the number was presented then?
The figure was presented in a prior meeting to the board by Finance, and that's the, the number that I.
You just showed it up, up here on the American Rescue Plan.
Yes.
The revenue replacement for road?
Yes.
That's, that is what that is. I sent you the update that Mr. Valdez put on the screen, probably back in March or so. It was my desire that Mauricio and I bring you an entire reconciliation of that number. So, for example, we've been spending money on broadband, we've been spending money on admin fees for the nonprofit rollout. We did not get that to you before budget, so my apologies. We do plan to get an overall allocation to you July or August at the latest, because we do have that discretionary balance remaining of, of roughly one point eight. I actually think it's about one point five now with the admin fees. We don't plan to lower that number, so, I mean, I think this is a decision, obviously it's your, it's the county's money, it's your decision, but I don't think we plan to lower that number. So if the board desires to, to do that number now, I think that does not change what Mauricio and I plan to present to you all. It will lock that amount in and not have you have the ability to use it for anything else, which I think is fine, because I think we all want that. Mr. Valdez mentioned kind of the, the, everything that needs to go on here in the county. We also wanna present you with a plan to take potentially some of this ARPA money for some of those improvements, too. So with that remaining balance, we do have a lot of ideas that we need your guidance on, but from the road fund revenue loss, if that's your desire, I think that's completely fine today.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Supervisor Malarra, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Reese?
None from my end, sir.
And none from my end, so I will call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries. Item five carries. So I, we need to go into an executive session to discuss item fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and move that we recess our regular session and convene into executive session pursuant to ARS 3843103A3 and for discussion, consultation for legal advice and direction regarding proposed settlements of notice of claim made on behalf of Kimberly Corsaro and Danine L. Peterson, and, under the same statute, ARS 3843103A3 and four, discussion and consultation for legal advice and to provide direction regarding a proposed draft letter to the Federal Bureau of Investigation, FBI, and the United States Attorney's Office, USAO, regarding the criminal charges against former Santa Cruz County Assessor Felipe Fuentes, as directed by the Board of Supervisors in executive session on May third, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, and so we, all those in favor of adjourning into the study session, into the executive session, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are in executive session.
Chairman, I will move that we adjourn our, our executive session and convene into regular meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are back in our regular session. Item fifteen, discussion, possible action to approve the proposed settlement agreement with Danine Peterson on the notice of claim made on behalf of Kimberly Coraso and Danine Peterson.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any, motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Can I clarify, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
We have two separate settlement agreements. Can you clarify which item you're, you're moving to approve?
Sure, we're moving to approve the settlement with Danine Peterson.
And that would be on the notice of claim made on behalf of both Kimberly Corsaro and Danine Peterson?
That's how it was read, and that's how I moved.
Oh, thank you, I'm so sorry. I didn't hear it correctly.
He read it, and I moved on that, so.
Awesome. I need some coffee.
I'm gonna do the same thing on the next one, so.
I like the, I like the clarity, thank you for keeping us in line. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and motion carries unanimously. Item sixteen, discussion, possible action to approve the proposed settlement agreement with Kim Coraso on the notice of claim?
Kimberly Corsaro.
Corsaro, on the notice of claim made on behalf of Kimberly Corsaro and Danine Peterson.
Move to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I have a motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item seventeen, we have discussion, possible action to approve the proposed draft letter with the amendments proposed during executive session to the Federal Bureau of Investigations, FBI, and the United States Attorney's Office, USAO, regarding the criminal charges against former Santa Cruz County Assessor Felipe Fuentes, as directed by the Board of Supervisors in executive session, May third, 2022.
Move to approve.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Item K adjournment.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion, anybody wanna stay longer? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.